I'm just gonna read the public hearing notice into the record. The Lakeville Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T on Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Upon the application for approval of a definitive plan submitted by J.I.J. Properties Incorporated for a three-lot subdivision located at 35 Myrick Street, Assessors Map 017, Block 004, Lot 003-01, Book 57395, Page 258. The application and assorted documents can be viewed in the Planning Department by appointment or on the Town of Lakeville Planning Board webpage. So at this time, I make a motion to open this public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hearing is open. Turn the floor over to you, Mr. Bissonette.
Good evening. Jamie Bissonette, Xenon Consulting Engineers for the record. Here on behalf of J.I.J. Properties, Inc., we're presenting Stowe Estates, which is also located at 35 Myrick Street. I'm gonna start and just go through a couple of the plans so that we can familiarize ourselves with the plan set itself and talk about the waivers and then try to answer any questions, if that's all right.
Could I just add, maybe if you could just turn, I just know I saw people come in and try to get a view, so we can just...
Only one thing here does better.
Thank you, Jamie.
Not a problem. All right, so the sheet that we have in front of you is the existing condition sheet. The site is comprised of about 11.6 acres. As you can see, there's a wetland, bordering vegetated wetland to the west of the property, the site here, and on this plan, we're showing the 100-foot buffer zone to the property. We've done a full boundary survey and also we've done perks with the Board of Health for the lots and done test holes for the drainage areas as well. Our proposal is to create three buildable lots with two additional parcels, Parcel B being the right-of-way, Parcel A being a parcel that's gonna be merged with the property to the west over in here. The three parcels vary in size anywhere from 75,000 square feet to over 200,000 square feet, and the parcels themselves are, for the right-of-way, is a little under 40,000, and Parcel A is a little over 80,000 square feet. The roadway itself, we're proposing it to be a private right-of-way. We're looking for a waiver for 40 feet in width instead of 50 feet. I know that's been something that's been looked upon favorably by the Planning Board over the years for private ways. That way, if it's, if somebody tries to wanna convert it to a public way, it really stands out that it doesn't meet the 50-foot requirement, so that would be something that would help stop it from gaining approval attraction that way. The, the road itself, we're proposing 14-foot paved with two 3-foot processed gravel berms on the side. We've done this several locations in town. We're looking to do a grass swale on the low side, which would be west and southwesterly, to collect storm water. This storm water will then be directed to the back drainage basin. It's gonna receive some treatment going through the swale itself, then we have a gravel filter berm, and then the basin itself with a micro pool will help to treat and reduce rates of runoff flow as shown in our drainage report. As you'll also notice on the plan, the proposal is to have municipal water, so we'd like to tie into water in the street, and the applicant is asked to put in overhead wires, so they'd like to do poles with overhead wires as shown on the plan here. Obviously, anything electric has to go through Middle Bar Gas Electric, I believe, here. I think this is their jurisdiction, not TNLP, but it'll have to go through whichever power company is in charge of the poles and their jurisdiction, but we've put it in a manner that seems to make sense and we would expect it to be something similar to that. Utilities on site, as I had said, municipal water. We are gonna have onsite septics. They're perked. The perks were marginal, but all passed. Water table out on site is between 18 inches and 32 inches. It's tilt, so it's...
Raise systems.
Raise systems, high water tables, slow perks. But the Board of Health did witness the perks. We did get them.
We did have a letter from them.
Okay. Yep, there's ranges anywhere from, I think, in the teens all the way up to 50-some-odd minutes an inch, which meets the code, so I think you're just gonna see larger leaching fields elevated and probably walkout basements. The, one of the things that always comes up is fire access. On our detail sheet, which is at the end of the set, we show the fire truck being able to maneuver on the hammerhead-style turnaround, so that is also part of this, this plan packet. And then the last part that I wanted to cover before waivers was the grade of the road and the length. You probably have noticed in the plan set, we kept the road just under the 750-foot maximum, and we kept the proposed profile of the centerline here at 6%, which is also the maximum under Lakeville's allowance. This allows us to really work with the grade, try to balance out cuts and fills here. Basically, what's happening is we're placing a high point near Myrick Street here, so the gutter line on Myrick Street will continue letting the water flow downhill. At this point down here, we'll be catching everything with our super-elevated roadway, coming over to the swale, pitching it in the swale and down, and that's gonna continue to happen the entire length of the road, all the way down to the basin, where we have an ultimate low point right here. This point will also pitch down this way to get into the drainage basin. So we've shown on our drainage reports that each storm event will have a reduction in rate for discharges.
So the actual, I'm gonna call it a culvert, is actually on Lot 3. It's not in the roadway?
Um, yes. So there's a drain...
You just make an easement, I see.
We have an easement proposed, yes. So I'm happy to go over the list of waivers if you'd like. I know we submitted it in written form, and it's also on the cover sheet of our plan set.
Yeah, why don't you go through those, just, you know, give a little bit of backup and reasoning on why before we start our discussion?
Sure, no, absolutely. All right, so the first waiver was to allow a centerline radius of less than 150 feet. This point and this point right here are tighter than 150 feet at the centerpoint radius. We're able to navigate them fine. We understand the reason for asking. It's a nice, smooth transition a lot of times, but when you're working with existing property lines and you wanna minimize disturbance, that was how we were able to do it. So we're requesting the curve to be a little bit sharper here instead of more dragged out. At the entrance of the roadway, we're asking for a radius from 30 feet to a curb radius of 30 feet at the intersection. 20 is proposed, so we're looking to apply with 20. This, I, I think that this is pretty standard. I know that in the regulations, it does reference 30 feet, but 20 is ample for this application. The right-of-way from 50 feet to 40 feet, we've already discussed. The change in grade from 5% within 150 feet of an intersection without a 75-foot level area. Again, what that would do is that would take and drag the fill further out, and so we'd be bringing in fill to create a longer level area. It's really not needed here, especially with the very low volume of traffic that's gonna be here. To allow a minor road without 24-foot paved, we're doing the 20-foot wide travel path with 14-foot paved and 3-foot of gravel on each side. Waive the requirements for curbs and berms. We're doing cross-country drainage. There's no need for curbs and berms on this.
They would inhibit the water from getting to the swale?
They would. You could put it on the upgrading side, but we have a gravel, 3-foot gravel travel berm, so that would tend to defeat the purpose as well. Waiver on sidewalks, it's for three houses, and there's no sidewalks out on Myrick Street in this area. The embankments greater than 3:1, we're proposing 2:1 on the side, again, to minimize disturbance. Over, to allow overhead electric telephone and cable utilities. This was a request from the applicant. They would prefer to do poles and overhead electric. Wave to require an oil-water separator prior to storm water outfall. It's a Lakeville regulation. We usually provide some type of treatment unit. In a case where we do cross-country drainage, you get ample treatment via the swale, the stone check dam, and the micro pool. And again, this is under five lots, so we don't need to meet storm water management.
Still have to go to conservation, though?
Absolutely. We do have work within the 100-foot.
Is there a chance that they will push back on that?
The oil-water separator, probably not, but they, I mean, the basin itself, this is the only portion that's within jurisdiction, but they could, they could. I mean, to do...
It is a runoff from, so...
To do an oil-water separator, you need catch basins.
Right.
So that would, that would change our entire design from cross-country drainage. Let's see. To allow drainage pipe material other than reinforced concrete pipe, we'd like to use the HDPE pipe. It's pretty standard on site designs now. To waive the requirement of monuments to be set at the northeast intersection point of Myrick Street falls within an existing gravel driveway that is to remain. To waive the requirement of the streetlights and to waive the requirement of the street trees, and that is all of our waiver requests.
On the drainage pipe?
Mm-hmm.
You're talking plastic-concrete, concrete-plastic?
RCP, yeah, reinforced concrete pipe, and then HDPE is the, it looks corrugated on the outside and smooth low on the end.
Right, you wanna use the...
We wanna use the plastic. Yeah, the plastic with 12 inches of cover meets H2 loading. It's a fantastic pipe.
That only on the detention basin?
That's the only place that we have pipes, I believe, for any type of drainage. The other pipe will be for water will probably be ducted line, I believe.
So we haven't got back, I guess, peer review was sent out?
Okay.
And they haven't come back with comments yet, I don't think. Not yet, right, Kathy? So we're still gonna wait to hear on that.
Sure.
How long? Can you illustrate how long the level or a leveled-off area is where the roadway comes to Myrick's for a vehicle to...
Well, sure. We, so what you can, you can see in here, each one of these hashes is 50 feet, so this is the edge of the pavement here, and over to here is about 50 feet. It's very close to level, so I would say you have a, it's a slight curve because you can't really actually have level, but I would say you've got close to 40, 45 feet. That is relatively level before it starts to go down at 6%. And remember, 6% is really not that bad either, but there's plenty ability for you to park the car...
6% is a little less than a handicap ramp. Is that accurate?
Yes. That's right. Handicap ramp can go to, I think it's around 8%.
7%?
Yeah.
Well, okay.
7.83 or something like that, yeah.
All right. Anybody from the Planning Board want to make any comments, have any questions?
I did. On that, you said the fire apparatus turnaround, so they'd have to go onto the gravel, right?
Let's take a look. What I can see here, here's that, two of their tires on the model that we did, two touched the gravel here. Actually, three, I guess. They're back two and one of their fronts. From here up to here, this is where they touch gravel.
Will they go off the gr, is that one?
No.
Radius that, there's one, like, kind of radius line, I can't tell if it's...
So those radius, some of those radius lines?
At the back of the, at the back of the truck?
Yeah, a lot of times they're the projectiles at the ends, yeah.
At the ends, right?
Yep.
But so if the truck was on, let's say the fire truck was there, and another emergency vehicle had to get through, like, an ambulance, they'd have to go around off the gravel, probably?
Nope, they would still be, because it's 20 feet, so I believe the fire truck width, even if it's 10 feet...
If they weren't on the gravel, if the fire truck was in the middle, or off, you know, off to one side on the 14 feet, nine feet plus?
Yeah, so that would...
An ambulance would have to go off the gravel, right?
That would give us 17 feet. Yeah, it probably would.
Okay.
Yep. I do know NFPA code is 20 feet. That's, so that's what they require. It used to be shorter than that, but...
Is there any, could you not put an angle on the hammerhead so that it was more at 90-degree to make that turn a little bit more typical?
We could look at it. Yeah, we could look at it.
And when we say the tires leave the pavement and they're going to the gravel, we've talked about a gravel berm as well as a swale. It's not going into the swale?
No, 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 no. So you have 3-foot processed gravel that's made for driving on. After that, you have a 2-foot grass strip, and then the swale starts.
You've used the term gravel berm.
Yep.
We have 3 feet of level?
You have 3 foot of gravel.
And then it, it's the elevation of the road?
I understand what you're getting at, I guess.
The gravel berm is right here in the drainage basin. It's for filtering storm water.
It's not the length of the road?
It has nothing to do with the road, just the drainage.
Okay.
On the side of the road, we have a 3-foot gravel strip on both sides, and then what we have, and we can see on the detail here, is we'll have what we're calling a shoulder, a grass shoulder of 2 feet before the swale starts. So you've got your 3-foot processed gravel, and the 2-foot grass shoulder, and then the swale starts. So even if they pulled over to the edge of the 3-foot, they'd still have 2 foot of relatively level grass before the swale starts.
Do you have anything to add?
I don't know, is there concern about, like, are there no streetlights, so if they're backing up, turning down there in the middle of the night, see where they're going?
One of the things that we've done in the past, and I could talk to the client about, is driveway lights at the ends that the homeowners have. That's been a pretty common thing that the Planning Board's worked with us on, so I think that that wouldn't be that big of a mess. So if you'd like for us to add that to the plan set, I'm sure we're fine with that.
So, do you have anything?
I do, I mean, I know a lot of times we do waive, you know, do some waivers on the private roads. I know I've said in the past, I get concerned when there's no sidewalks, especially when Route 79 is busy street. We have three houses, 2.5 kids per house. If we have a high school student walking out depending on the year, the time of year, it may be dark, and if we have someone returning from work, second shift, or people leaving, and there's nowhere for them to stand on the side of the road if there's snow on the side of the road, that is a concern for me.
Yep.
Because I don't think they typically plow that gravel edge, and just knowing the speed of the traffic on Route 79 and the amount of traffic, that's concerning for pedestrian safety. So, and then even the, the overhead electric, I know even just going back to when Barbara was on the board, that's definitely something, I think, you know, we were looking to have all new subdivisions have the underground wires.
Sure.
It, it just saves a lot of headache for all those residents in the long term. I think some trees, I'd definitely like to see some trees at least included.
Are you doing a lot of clearing to do this, or are you trying to focus just on the actual roadway?
Well, we're, our proposed tree line is where you can kind of see, we're trying to keep it to around the driveways for an entrance. There'll be trees kept in here and in this vicinity here, and then we're trying to keep the trees on the side as well.
Okay.
So you're really just clearing the actual roadway itself?
Yeah, we're, we're really trying to do minimal disturbance out here. Yep.
So it's not something that we would really want you to...
Yeah, this is...
Re-landscape it because you're not un-landscaping it?
This isn't a field. We're only gonna have, we're only looking to take what we have to.
Okay. So, so those are my main two concerns, the overhead electric and the sidewalks.
Okay.
Sean, really, I wanted to address mine. I was concerned about the turnaround for the fire as well as the secondary vehicle in there, and again, the lighting, so if we can get lighting on the dry one, that would accomplish that.
I think that's a, a good, a good resolution for that.
On the past couple of these we've done, Jamie, that are the private roads?
Yep.
We have, like, to see that Homeowners Association note on the plans. I didn't see it on here.
Nope, that's a good point.
Just to make sure that, you know, that gets filed, registered deeds, and so all the homeowners know, and people buy into this, that it's not a surprise.
Yep. We'll make sure that gets out.
And Mr. Chair, I do, I do have one more note. The drainage easement, that wasn't included in the lot area, right?
It is included in the lot area, but I believe that you call out how big the easement is.
That's like a five-acre lot, too, I think.
Oh, yeah, that's a massive lot, so that, yeah. So the drainage easement, 66,800 square feet. That lot is 183,000, so...
And then your front yard circle is actually located in...
It's, yep, front yard circle, yep.
Is there, just because of the merger, that you're not including, is it Parcel A? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the understanding is, because it's gonna be merged. I believe the note on the plan talks about an A&R plan as well that will be filed separately to deal with that lot.
Okay.
Even, but that lot's not what concerned us. That fourth lot wouldn't have had a problem. It's just we planned on merging it over, so...
If you don't mind, would you mind flipping back to the page that shows the cross-section pitch of the road?
Absolutely.
Just give us a little explanation on that. Grade change in the first 150 feet after you leave the level spot, that looks like that 6%. What kind of, over that 150 feet, what elevation change are we looking at from one end to the other?
Certainly. So, so essentially what happens is, what we're trying to do here is keep as close to natural grade as possible. You can see the dashed or semi-dashed line that runs through and how close we are to it, and we do that on purpose. It stops us from having to bring in a tremendous amount of fill, change the courses of water flow any more than we have to. So like you said, Mr. Chair, this point right here is elevation 159. The high point is 160 at our, at our peak over in here, somewhere around 160, 160.5. When, actually, our peak's 160. When we get down over to the end in this vicinity here, we're 149.2, which is essentially where we start...
11 feet?
Yeah, we transition, so about 11 feet. Then when we get down over to here, 145, 140, probably 147-ish at the low point. I'm sorry, 143 at the low point.
All right, so I just, you have a good plan, but it's just, it's a little deceiving with the beginning of that line. It looks like...
It's extremely steep.
You're climbing like that, but in reality, from where I'm sitting, we're probably driving up to the height of the gutters and the house across the street over 200 feet.
Yeah, so what, what we do, what everybody does with profiles for this is we exaggerate it by 10. So the vertical scale is 1 in 4, and the horizontal is 1 in 40. So, yeah, it's, it's dragged way up to really emphasize, so you can see the actual minute details, because 1% would appear flat, you know, at a, at a lesser scale. So, yes, this is very exaggerated.
Okay. I see some folks here I don't recognize. Anybody like to speak to this?
I live to the right of this property. We're, we, I'm assuming the stone wall...
Yeah, we own behind this property.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I, I'm here because I'm concerned about drainage.
I have a...
If I could, please, come right up to this microphone here and then state your name.
Dave Inglis, we live at 39 Myrick Street, which is to the right of this property that they're doing.
Yep.
There's trees falling down, there's a runoff across the street from me, there's a woman who has a house, her whole front yard's always flooded, and there's like a...
And the street, you know it.
String that runs under the road. And now, I know the guy who owns the property, Tony, I mean, I have no problem with him, and he told me a couple years ago he's gonna build a lot to the right, told me that's a lot, and I said, "It's, it's not." I mean, there's a lot of ways, a big swamp, all the trees, they've fallen in my yard because they can't support the root system because it's all wet back there.
It's very wet. So, so is it my land? I don't know how they got a perk, but I've been there for 28 years.
I'm concerned of a runoff. If he puts houses there, is it gonna run off to the wetness between us and them? I mean, that's already, trees are falling on my walls.
They're gonna have, there's a lot of groundwater.
And we do have...
I deal with it every winter.
We have a sump pump, and matter of fact, this winter, our sump pump stopped working, and all of a sudden, I went down there and water was coming in, and thank God I caught it, but it has been a concern, and personally, I don't think they should even build the house we live in.
First of, you had to have a minimum of 175 feet of the river.
I know you're a builder, so I know...
What's your name?
What's that?
What's your name?
I am looking out for my concern.
Well, I'm the owner. Lynn Hagerty, 39 Myrick.
Thank you.
Been there for 28 years.
I, I just don't want any groundwater coming back on our side and just polluting our septic. Our septic's right there in the front, right next to that stone wall. We own the property to the stone wall, and if you go to the end, the stone wall...
Do you have the locus of...
This, this appears to be their property here, and then I believe it comes...
What's my property on?
Oh, she's gonna show it.
That's the road, isn't it?
So, I believe this to be them over here and this piece.
That L-shaped?
The L-shaped lot.
Yep.
And I believe this is Mr. Dooley's property right back here.
Yeah, he had cut down a lot of trees.
So them being west of this...
That's a lot of wetland.
Could you give, you have the gradient lines there, could you give a, an overview of the natural flow of the water right now?
I, I mean, sure.
It's hard to tell, I mean, you don't have the entire wetland on the plan, so...
Yeah, we only go up, you know, to...
Within the limits of the property.
Sure. So it appears that their property is over here and then comes down and, and up. Right now, the water pitches down towards the wetland, as is what we're, what we're looking to do with the drainage basin is we'll be collecting it and we'll be discharging it actually over here to reduce rate, so we don't think we'll be exacerbating the situation at all. I think you're...
Where's my property on this?
If you go to your front sheet, right? At the locus now?
Yep, the front sheet?
Yeah.
Yep, I can do that again. It just didn't have the publicity.
Nope, all right, all right, no, just to show them, uh...
Yep.
Yeah, but that's just so small.
So your property is right here over in here?
Yeah, and you're, and you're wanting to build three houses here?
No, no.
No, no, no.
Which property is over?
Behind Tony's, I'm sorry. Is that where we're in the back?
Behind Tony?
Next.
So this is not our stone wall?
No.
No.
No, your property is right here.
You get, that's the end of your property?
Yeah, your property starts right here.
Oh, I know, I've been dealing with water. I don't know how you got perks.
Well, that's to the back of Tony's property.
And you did say that they're...
Yeah, but we own some of that land too, and it's all wet land back there too?
He owns way to the left.
How could his, all of a sudden, be dry? Come on.
Well, I'm proposing another lot to the right of Tony's, that piece of property down the road. I mean, I have pictures on my phone. I'll show you a big swamp, I'll show you the cat, and I, and I'll show you the river that runs through there. Tony himself said he used to go in there with his backhoe and clear it up.
I mean, it fills up on 79. There's been many accidents because of that.
Yeah, because the water gets caught, it doesn't drain under the road, and people, last year, my buddy had a brand-new truck. Guy from Deaville's Restaurant hit that patch of ice and smashed his truck, 4:30 in the morning. I was up, I saw it, but I mean, because it was all ice, because it's not draining under the road, but that's what it's supposed to do.
You're talking about up front here?
Yeah, I'm talking up front. And that was my concern, why I was here, because I thought that was what you're talking about, that front piece. I know he's got a piece out back. I mean, I'm a hunter, but not that I hunt out there, but...
So where, the part that we're talking about right now is just the three lots in the back with the roadway out in the back. We're not, right now, we're not proposing a house up front here at all.
Right, right.
It's the three houses up here in the back.
And I will dispute the house up front because there's no way.
There's no way.
Right in the middle of that, and I got pictures on my phone right now. Right in the middle of that, and I got pictures on my phone right now. I'll show you the runoff.
So.
Anybody's interested, but.
So your, your concerns of the water are
For more water on my property.
I can't stand any more water.
We have four hundred feet that goes beyond the stone wall. He owns that wet piece in the front, but we, beyond that stone wall goes back four hundred feet and that's our property too. That's all wet back there. Trees have just fallen down because it can't support a root system.
We, we do agree that this is wet.
Right.
Yep.
Right, right.
That's actually a wetland.
Talking about down the road, either the build on that other lot, but I don't see Yeah, that's what you're talking about. Not this, no, not this. But you said that's gonna be another thing proposed down the road.
We're saying that we're merging this piece with this piece.
Oh, I thought you said you're gonna put another house lot down.
They may. I don't know. I'm not hired to do that right now.
Right.
Well, I'm, I'm here for those three lots.
Right, I mean, I'm not, I'm not here to fight you or anything, but I am here to protect my property.
Sure.
If I, I, I have water problems, could you put these three houses on? Who, where, where do I gotta go? Am I gonna have to deal with the water myself and run, run some cat or runoff myself, or what, what do I do with the water? I'm just, that's my concern, that's all. And I, I'm all for building and, and I understand where you're at, because
Anyway, subdivisions, they don't need so much footage.
Yeah, I'm not trying to stop you or anything, I'm just concerned.
For what?
Like in Lakeville, you, you have the minimum, it used to be that you had to have a hundred and seventy-five feet of road.
No.
You don't need that anymore.
You never needed that. For the road, you only need fifty feet. For the actual layout of the road, you're talking on the frontage, on the front yard of a house, and they ha, they exceed that.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we're, this right in here would be actually the new road. We're creating this
So basically, you're going up the side of his yard?
Yes.
To the driveway. Now, does that road go to the right or to the left of his house?
Um, it should be on the left-hand side of, uh, the right-hand side of his house.
So it would be on the side closest to the wetland?
Yes. Yeah, they don't own up here.
Now, you're talking about burns and stuff on that side to prevent the water from, that, that, that's what concerns me. Where is that drain water? Do they have a retention pond there or something to collect it? Is that what that is?
Yeah, right there.
So the drainage is all being caught in a swell all along the road here, brought down and discharged into a pond where it's gonna be, uh, treated and then released at a slower rate than what it's coming out.
Release?
Yeah, it goes through a pipe and outlet structure and, um, is metered out. A detention basin means they're detaining the flow, so it goes out slower than what it's coming in.
So it's gonna absorb the water.
Jamie, overall, including, so you've got the length of road less than seven hundred and fifty feet?
Uh huh.
Plus the distance to the outlet on the back of the retention pond?
Yep.
What's the distance from Myrick Street to that? About a thousand feet?
Yeah. Yep.
And how deep, deep is your lot?
Well, I suppose I own a hundred and seventy-five feet of the road and then from that one corner, it goes back four hundred and then from that corner goes back four hundred.
Goes sideways four hundred.
Yeah, it's in the L shape, like you said.
So they're going six hundred feet beyond your property line is where the water gets discharged?
I, I don't know what that means.
Well, I don't care in the back.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not trying to stop you or anything and I do understand that, you know, this is great if that's what you guys do. I, I just don't wanna have a problem down the road where now I gotta deal with wet stuff.
Yeah, we don't want you to either.
More wet stuff.
Well, you know what I mean. Even, even our back lot, I mean, I have two little kids that play out back there and, you know, I got
I understand.
All right.
Coyotes going.
Yeah, there's a lot of animals back there too, that's
Yeah, a lot of animals.
So
Mr. Chair, I mean, um, Jamie, did you say, was it Ed Cullen from Board of Health who was there to
To the parks?
To the parks, okay. And I mean, if you do have concerns, I, I would just say reach out to the Board of Health.
Well, that's why I came on the meeting, because I don't know how it's gonna affect us. I mean, I'm, I'm not an engineer. I don't know how this water
Well, so we don't have to do, like he said, we don't have to require the peer review for the stormwater. But we are having a peer review, an engineer on behalf of the town look at these plans to make sure that it does comply with our zoning. So, but that's what, we haven't had it back yet, so I think we will probably continue this.
We, we need you anyway, just, we wanna get our peer review stuff back. I would like to see you at least apply to conservation.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we hate to see it change and then we've signed it, you, you know.
Absolutely.
Uh, And, you know, we mentioned a few concerns tonight, so we'd like to see you address those as well.
Okay. You guys are gonna be getting another, another certified notification for conservation, so. Just so you're not
I mean, this is, we just got this like three days ago. I, I'm like, what, what?
Yeah, we've had a couple of weeks.
Did they send out two? Kathy, do you send out two notifications or just one?
Just one.
Just one.
It gets noticed twice in the paper, though.
Yes, that's what it is, yeah. The town sends out
The firemen told us it was here.
Yeah, because we went over to the other
We burned it there.
I mean, we went over to this, so, you know.
All right, so based on our discussion tonight, when would you like to come back?
Um, oh, I, I mean, I think that we can get a filing in with the Conservation Commission, uh, next week.
Yeah.
What do you think, Tony?
So, do you know?
Do you think we'll have the peer review back in, for the next meeting?
Do you know when it went out, Kathy?
I'm not sure, no.
Do you know who, did it go to Beals and Thomas or?
No.
I thought it went to Environmental Partners.
E P G. Can, can we tentatively put us on for two weeks and then if we haven't gotten the peer review comments, we'll request a continuance?
Absolutely.
Does that sound okay?
All right. That way we don't waste anyone's time.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would rather see you do that and just notify us and we'll just continue it to the twenty-fifth of May, but so we'll put you on the eleventh of May. So I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan at thirty-five Myrick Street until May eleventh at seven PM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, no, you don't, you get it. You gotta protect yourself. I, I understand.
I know my builders are saying, oh, you'll never run out of water. Now I know why. It's my wealth, for my life.
So, you're welcome. Have a good night. Think I spoke with Jamie, actually. Uh, so you guys, you, you're coming back with this plan that Bob Forbes came in and talked to us about. Uh, and right now, I just wanted to address, it's more of a housekeeping thing for us and you, just to make sure that we're good. So currently, you know, this is scheduled as a public hearing that's ongoing, uh, but we have a significant change. So I, I'd like to see you ask your attorney to see if you would like to re-advertise.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was gonna say. So I wanted to quickly just go over some, real quick, some of the comments I wasn't able to make the last meeting, but I watched it. And I worked with Niles and Bob Forbes and Jamie to incorporate a lot of the changes that we heard. So I just wanted to cover that real quick.
Yeah, go, go right ahead.
Okay, and then at the end of it, I just wanted to request a continuance, probably forty, forty-five days out, to give us time to re-advertise. Um, I know we have a deposit into the review engineer, so we can get them the updated plans and give them time to put eyes on it.
Yes. Um, I actually was talking with Michelle, um, about, you had your first proposal with the small houses, which the setback issue came up. Um, I'm not sure that it constitutes a hardship, but would you consider attempting to go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance for one lot line? If you, I guess
So it's, so I, I believe it would be two lot lines.
That's right, because you'd have to go to both.
Correct.
So you have the layout.
Yeah, I did talk about that with attorney O'Shaughnessy and because this is allowed by right under the zoning, I think it'd be a tough sell to say that we need it from forty feet to twenty feet because it's a hardship.
Right, I agree. I just, I know we changed, uh, a bylaw to allow non-conforming lots to give relief automatically on one lot line. But, uh, it wouldn't necessarily apply to this, but we were trying to work in that direction, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, that was the plan that I worked on for the last thirteen months, so.
And honestly, I feel like, um, even like, as a result of our housing production survey that we took from residents, those smaller, um, units, you know, one level living is more in line with what our residents really wanna see. And I know this is coming in under mixed use and it's, it's adhering to that underlying business zone, which to me, it's kind of a shame to see that go away, um, without maybe exploring the possibility. So I didn't know if
Yeah, so that was, I completely agree that cluster style, um, age-qualified housing came exactly, that came right out of the last housing report. So that's where that idea came from.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, the, the language is a little funky in the bylaws, um, so we went after it for twelve, thirteen months, thinking that it was twenty-foot setbacks. And when we found out that it was forty, that that was really the only option that, that we can do and we're trying to do the best with what we have.
Right.
I did talk to attorney O'Shaughnessy, Niles and Jamie, and I think it would be a, a hard sell saying building less units is a hardship for the landowner.
Right.
But, but considering the traffic issues in this area, adding additional units to this already, you know, heavily trafficked area where we know there's plenty of accidents, funeral home needs a police detail every time there's a service. Um, I just, I didn't know if it's worth a conversation with Z B A, um, if that, if they would be interested in that sort of relief. Just because I do think that original plan was very much in line with what our residents wanna see. Um, I think it will fit better aesthetically, um, design-wise too, from what you showed. They look, you know, little porches on the houses and, um, I thought it was, I thought it was a good, good idea. This, I'm not, I'm not as crazy about the, you know, the large apartment-style buildings. Um, I think a lot of people in town would probably agree. So, um, I don't know if you'd be willing to even have that conversation. But I know you, because you'd have to refile and all, everything that you've already done so far is kind of scrapped, so I don't know if it's worth just
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's quite a gamble and it's, it's an expensive gamble for me to pursue that. Um,
But just have a conversation, I'm saying, in relation to that first plan before proceeding, you know, if that's worth it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I consulted with attorney O'Shaughnessy for, for a while about this because that was a, a saving grace that, that we were gonna try to go down that route, so I wouldn't have to pay to read, engineer the whole entire site. And the, the feedback that I, that I got from, I know that, I don't know who we talked to, but I know that he reached out and talked to people. Um, and again, I think it'd be really hard to sell that it would be a owner hardship.
Yeah. Why don't you talk about what you got?
Sure. Um, so we incorporated the comments of not having one parking lot, having some green space in the middle, so we were able to separate it with some green space. We were able to take the hammerhead turnaround, uh, incorporate more parking closer to the entrances. There'll be two entrances to each building. Um, so you have walk-up service to it. I know in the original plan, the, the board really wanted to see business to, to screen it from the street. Since the plan changed, um, it doesn't matter to me or not if we have the first floor retail office in the front. We have it shown here. It makes no difference to me. Um, I think logistically, if it's gonna be residential, it should all be residential. If the board still wants to see some mixed-use, um, element to it, we're fine to incorporate that. Both the buildings will be the same size. It'll be a mix of one and two bedrooms, uh, and it'll be all age-qualified housing. So these buildings right here are about one-third the size of the storage building next to it, to give a little comparison. Um, in footprint, um, one-third, and in footprint, they're smaller than the C V S building located to the north of it.
Uh, so your, your point you just made about the business, retail, whatever space in the front of that building. I, I did want that initially when you had the small houses. I thought it would have been a nice thing on Main Street, uh, with these bigger buildings. I think it actually might add some confusion to the layout of the building to have that little spot, so I am sort of indifferent to it now myself, so I, I'd like to actually just pull the board and
Sure.
What do you think about that in order?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda indifferent to it at this point. It's almost why have that little bit of space for, uh, retail or meeting or whatever it was going to be. I'm just not in love with the three-story. You know, when we look at all the residential surveys we've had out there and the need, it's not in for three-story complexes. I really liked, uh, the initial rendering of, of the small houses.
Would two-story work for you or is it not enough?
To, to do two-story, the, the buildings would have to be so long to make it work financially that I think it would be more of an eyesore. Um, so the, I'd say the only saving, I, I did like the bungalow design, that's why it was my first presentation. But I will say, from the street, I think having these buildings will look more cohesive into the neighborhood than having cluster-style bungalow houses in between, uh, ninety-two-hundred square foot building and a seventy-two-thousand square foot building. I think they'd kind of look towered by that. I do think these will look better. I think the, the bungalow-style housing is what we were seeing, um, from, from the prior surveys, so that's why we pushed it. But I do think these will look more cohesive in this neighborhood. Um, so the way that the elevation drops off here, we're gonna be doing some cut and fill from the front to back. So from the street, this will look approximately the same height as a C V S building when you're standing right here. Cause even though this is only one story, they have second-floor mezz, so it's really two stories in height. Um, so I think it'll screen decently from there. It'll be a little shorter than this building. So it will, it will be cohesive to this area and it will be shorter than the buildings across the street.
And you had, uh, a conceptual look at that building that was a little bit rural, a little bit modern. Do you have that still?
So this, this was our best attempt to, to mix, um, I, I would say, small-town, Middleborough, Lakeville, Rochester with a, in modern, inviting, welcoming space to live in. Um, so U K A architecture, um, created this out of a, a survey out of just south shore housing. Uh, so that's where we came up with, with all the breaks, the built-in, uh, balconies, so nothing's protruding, a couple of jog lines in the building, uh, the overhang roof styles, um, with, with the two main entrances to access it. So we were trying to blend the, the Lakeville feel of a little rural with where building's going today, a little bit more modern, clean and inviting.
So right now, the site plan that you have, the conceptual site plan, shows a rectangle, but as you go through this, you're, you're gonna show us something that maybe has the jogs and the
Yeah, yeah, so the, the rectangle is, is the outer limit of all of these. So once you take this jog and line it up with that jog, it is a straight line, so footprint, we are showing it as a box. Um, but when we come in next time, we'll come in with elevations and floor plans.
Uh, Michelle or John, did you guys have any input as far as that first floor retail space on Main Street? Another reason that I was sort of turned against it too is when it was a standalone building, it could have its own parking, but now it, it, I think it
Yeah, it doesn't
confuses the parking.
Yeah, there's no parking right in front of it. That wouldn't make sense. I was never like, you know.
Yeah, those lots just be reserved spots and they'll have to walk all the way around the residential to get to the
Or through it, which is
Right.
Maybe an invasion for them, so. I, I, I get a sense that the board would have not, no problem with just keeping it all residential. Um, from a design standpoint, where do you say you are with this plan? You've gone a little further than when we talked about Forbes.
Yeah, so, so we've gone a little further. Um, I wanted to, once, once we re-advertised, that's when I was gonna push and, and turn around floor plans and elevations. Um, probably ten to fifteen days from when I tell them to go on that. So they have everything loaded up. And I just pushed pause to recollect after where we were on the last design.
Yep.
Before we move forward.
Uh, the extension of the parking, so that, I think the intent was to get a fire truck down the side of that building. Has the fire chief seen this plan or not yet?
So, so he has seen the plan where these parking spots were here.
Yep.
And this was right here. We haven't reached, once we have a full set, we'll send it to him showing the additional parking, but this width of the turnaround stayed the same. And, um, Niles threw the largest truck that Lakeville has and it, it gets right down there and can, and can back up right here.
But can it get around the building? Cause doesn't he need to get around the building?
No, I, I think there's a requirement, a hundred and fifty feet?
Correct, right. So it's, it's a hundred and fifty feet. The building length is about a hundred and forty. Um, so being at the end of here or being right here, uh, gets you to all the sides.
Uh, do you have any comments or input you'd like to
No, not at this time.
Go further and Michelle? Other than you don't like the big buildings?
I don't. I, I would honestly, like, I would even like try to go to Z B A and speak as a resident, you know, in support of it because I think it just fits in character. you know, in support of it because I think it just fits in character with the town more so. And like I said, th- this is already a very, um, you know, traffic wise, uh, concerning area of town. Um, I know you showed the buildings with the jogs and whatnot. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't scream Lakeville at all, unfortunately. Um, it, it says Meriem, so, or Stoughton, something like that. that's just how I feel.
I think it'll fit in well there. I know you don't like it and I'm not, not being argumentative to appreciate your opinion, Michelle. I, I, I get it.
I think the design then it just showed us, if we have to go with that, is a pretty good design for.
Yep.
The three stories.
You're familiar with, I saw there's some buildings over in Norton on one twenty-three. If you.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of projects going there.
Uh, one, it's pretty complete. If you got off one ninety-five and went towards Easton on one twenty-three to the, you'd go right.
Okay.
Uh, very nice looking project, so, sort of similar to what you have, but it looks like they have actually maybe a pool house in the middle of parking areas as well. But they're attractive looking buildings. I, I'd like to see something like that. It's very similar, I think, to the right area you have.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check it out and if there is something specific that any board member doesn't like about the way the building looks, I'd be more than happy before we push it into architectural design to, to give them that feedback.
Yep. And John?
Well, I'm just curious, I, I'm new to the board, so just I haven't seen the, um, what's the height and relative relationship? I know you, you had said like the, the CBS, like I'm just curious, do you know what your proposed building height is or you're not, you're not there yet, right?
So, yeah, I don't, I don't have the grading elevations on.
I'm saying, I'm more worried, I'm more worried about the one the street, you know what I mean? That's where the one you're going to say, I'm just curious, I was curious, you don't have to, if you don't have, I was curious what the, because that storage building is going to dwarf this regardless.
Yeah. It's dwarfing everything.
Right.
I don't, I don't have the.
Don't worry about it, next time. I was just curious. Compared to what, where is it CBS? And, you know, I mean, like, cause like you said, it's a, messing, like, I'm just curious if it's.
Pretty substantial grade drop though, from that property down to CBS.
So, so the grade drop really starts right here and goes this way.
But doesn't, there's a wall.
And then there's a, a slight grade on thirteen Main Street to eleven Main Street. And then once you get to eleven Main Street, which is CBS's property, there's a giant drop right here.
Right, hanging along the back.
All right, so no matter what, CBS is going to look like it's in a hole compared to the surface that you're on.
No, no, so what, what, what we're proposing is there's going to be, because the property drops off here.
How much are you cutting down out of that?
So this, this will probably be cut, there'll be a little height here just for the, the state drainage and then it'll sink in a little bit. Um, and I think it's probably going to be seven to eight feet lower than it is now because we're going to cut and fill from here to here to level off the property a little bit. So I think if you're standing directly in front of it, it probably will look a little bit bigger than CBS, but if you're standing somewhere up here visually, they'll, they'll look about the same. Um, I mean, same, same thing, I know you guys think that this is a monstrosity, but we, we did do a twelve foot cut there, um, so that when you're coming down the street, it's not, it's not towering over everything. So it represents more like a, a two story building, unless you're standing in front of it, then it looks like a three story building.
Okay. Uh, so what else are you looking for, from the board tonight?
So I'd, I'd like to, uh, continue this to mid-June to allow us time to re-advertise, um, submit the updated plans, uh, submit the updated plans to the peer review and give them a little time to provide comment.
Okay, um, so we're just going to continue it from a formality standpoint. Um, Mark and I talked and what I had mentioned to you about the re-advertising, so want you to work that out just in case. I, I don't think that the, the planning board is looking to have you necessarily pay for a refiling as much as, we just don't want to have you have somebody say they're grieved because the plan changed to what we would say is substantial. And so we just want to make sure that if you need to repost it in the papers and re-advertise, that people see that.
Okay, so I did, yeah, I did have, uh, Michael O'Shaughnessy look, look into that and he was comfortable, if the board was comfortable, re-advertising.
Yeah.
If you guys want to do it another way, I'm open to that as well. Um, but he, he did say because it was, um, site, site plan review, he said if it was ZB A, no, no question would have to pull it and, and reapply. But he said because it was site plan review, um, and no permits or approvals have been issued, he was comfortable with re-advertising.
Okay, so where we do have an actual public hearing going on, uh, when do you want to come back?
See the June eighth or June twenty-second.
Let's, June, June twenty-second to give us plenty of time.
So I make a motion to continue the public hearing for site plan review on thirteen Main Street until June twenty-second at seven PM.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Good luck, bro.
Thanks.
Uh, so we had on the agenda Harding Street, uh, but that's been withdrawn by the applicant to discuss possible changes. So that wasn't actually a public hearing, that was just more of a discussion. So no action is required by the board.
Is he coming back on another time to discuss it or?
Uh, I don't think so.
Just not doing it?
Well, so we already approved the site plan, but I guess he had an applicant come in that wanted something different than that.
Right.
So he was going to entertain changes, but then I guess.
No.
That person didn't sign a PNS or whatever.
Okay.
So he said, well, I'm not, I'm not going to put more effort into it if he's not even going to sign an agreement, so.
So he's just going with what we had already approved?
Yes.
Okay.
At this point, yes.
And, and, uh, just to clarify now, uh, they filed today a permit for a special permit from the zoning board for, to, to, uh.
Auto, auto service.
Auto service facility in the existing building, so they're not going to modify it, so.
so we didn't have minutes to approve tonight. I see that I'm scratched.
Yeah. A little crazy.
So the next item is to housing production plan discussion. Uh, so we have a copy of housing production plan and a spreadsheet in our packet. Uh, Michelle, if you don't mind, I'm going to let you kind of go through the, I think this is your draft of the housing production plan?
It is.
So if you could explain where that's at, at this point, uh, to all the other board members?
All right, so, um, I think we went over it last time. Um, there was a bunch of items that I felt were not incorporated that I had requested, so I just went through and, and made my own suggestions and then cleaned it up. Um, there was a section that I left in red, uh, that was lined, um, and looking through this, um, PowerPoint from Serpent, I'm assuming, um, it, it looks like they've addressed all of these items and they've, they've said, um, whether it was one of their revisions or, um, from the revision that I had made. Um, so revisions to the introduction to include more historical context, it says that's going to be incorporated. Um, remove barriers to development section, it says it's not present in the newest Lakeville version. Okay. Uh, remove hire part-time staff member from strategy number five, that was incorporated in Serpent's initial revision. That's good. Um, talking about housing section is too negative, later revisions included a section about benefits of home ownership. So there was a lengthy explanation that says we cannot include a section about the benefits of homeownership in the introduction to a housing production plan as it falls too far outside of the scope of relevance for this type of plan, the production of subsidized affordable housing. We have already broadened the scope of the HPPs we produce to include a discussion on market rate housing and homeownership, which is not typical or necessary in a standard HPP that follows DHCD's regulations. In light of this, we will remove both our and Lakeville's version of the talking about or planning for housing section from the plan. So it sounds like, uh, Taylor's, um, intent is to just remove that section altogether and saying that, um, it doesn't need to be included for DHCD. Um, number five, include more details about the subsidized housing inventory and expir- expiring units, says that this, uh, is to be incorporated. Um, it says, you know, the addition is appreciated, we're happy to include it. Um, number six, remove section addressing the housing choice initiative. Um, now this is a big red no, so that's the, the section, um, that I left in there that was red lined, support Commonwealth's commitment to housing.
Which is still on age eleven?
Uh, ten and eleven, yes. And so the part that I didn't like, um, it said, it talks about, um, targeted legislative reform to encourage municipalities to plan and build diverse housing stock. So in my opinion, I don't like top-down regulations. I think, um, communities should be able to, you know, designate that on their own.
But I, I think the point is, is they're, they're saying this is the regulations, this is the way things are. It's not saying in here that you're going to incorporate any one thing, it's just stating facts. So, I mean, there, there's no reason not to just put it in to make it comply. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not like.
Cause it said that that's necessary, cause I didn't see it in the guidelines.
Uh, you, you, so you're going to have to discuss that with Serpent, they're the ones who regularly submit these to DHCD, they know what DHCD looks for in the plan, they, um, and what DHCD will approve or not approve. Uh, this is not saying like they're representing that we're going to take, follow, go apply for a housing choice grant or we're going to ask for other technical assistance for, um, other, um, you know, housing, uh, grants, um, and programs, it's just identifying the fact that they exist. So, I mean, I really.
But they certainly have. In the interest of. Throw up with the changes in buy right densities.
Well, so, I mean, we could have, from the guidelines, it looks like we could have just taken our existing housing production plan and changed the figures and got the graphs a little bit and been on our way.
Right.
Um, and it, you know, it's not up to Serpent, it's up to the DHCD and they have a thirty day, uh, review where they could come back to the town and give us any, um, you know, you know, notify the municipality of any deficiency and offer an opportunity to remedy the deficiency. I did see something, um, so one of the items in the guidelines, which talks about implementation strategies, it does say participation in regional collaborations, which I like the sound of regional collaborations rather than legislative reform, because that sounds like a collaborative effort. So I wouldn't mind replacing that sentence with something like that. But I, I mean, I don't know how the rest of you feel. I would like to just see it removed and go to DHCD with it. If they need to see something like that, we could potentially add it back in.
I would agree with that.
Okay. How about you, John?
John?
Yeah?
That's fine.
So, okay, so that was number six. Number seven, include more context about Lakeville's growth, to be incorporated. Number eight, replace Middleborough with another town that more closely resembles Lakeville, says to be incorporated. Um, but it says we will not remove Middleborough from the analysis as it's standard practice to compare neighboring communities. However, we will include an additional town of similar scale to Lakeville, so that's good too, because.
Right.
Middleborough's so much larger.
Right.
Um, number nine, include historic school enrollment data. Uh, it says it was incorporated in Serpent's initial revision. Um, number ten, inferences about Lakeville's school enrollment, not present in newest Lakeville, uh, version. Uh, number eleven, double check percentage for under fifty thousand annually, incorporated in Serpent's initial revision. Number twelve, inferences about Lakeville's household income and housing stock diversity, to be incorporated. Um, we do not feel there's enough information based on income demographics alone to draw the conclusion that Lakeville has a diverse housing stock. I think one of the, the insertions that I made was that, um, if we do have twenty percent that are below that fifty thousand, uh, income, that that does demonstrate a diverse housing stock. So she's, she's saying it doesn't, it's not conclusive, but it seems to be fairly evidentiary. Um, number thirteen, provide more context about vacancy rates with employment data, incorporated in Serpent's initial revision. Uh, number fourteen, removal of low density zoning regulation section with the barriers chapter, it's not present in the newest Lakeville, uh, revision, version. Um, number fifteen, restrictive zoning regulation section should include information about the high water table in Lakeville, incorporated in Serpent's initial revision. Uh, number sixteen, lack of public utility section should say limited, incorporated in Serpent's initial revision. Number seventeen, include more context about new title five regulations regarding nitrate of sensitive areas, to be incorporated. Uh, so it does say that they will include some more contextual information. Um, number eighteen, remove portions of negative community perception section addressing fair housing laws. This one is, um, no, but I'm not sure how or, or where to identify that, that item. But, um, yeah. So, once again, I'm not sure. It, there's nothing in the guidelines that really says something along those lines that I saw. Um, remove, number nineteen, remove sections addressing section three A.
Hey, Michelle, before you, you, uh, go further, can we talk about that negative just a second?
Sure.
Are you asking, there's a header on page thirty-three that says negative community perceptions. Are you asking that wording to be changed?
No, so this version that you're looking at is my suggested version.
Okay.
So that's why I'm not sure if, what she's talking about, because I don't, I didn't, we didn't get a revision from her.
Okay.
Prior to this meeting, all we got was this, um.
Your revision, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, uh, number nineteen, remove section.
So wait, so, hold on one sec, so on the old plan, there was the barriers section on barriers to development, did you remove that in your version? Is that what they're talking about?
No, it's still in here, page thirty.
Oh.
Yeah, it's still there.
Okay, was there, oh yeah, here we go. Was there something that was removed? Was there something that was removed, Michelle, between your version and the version that they originally submitted back in February?
Um, no, because even if you look under the heading that says negative community perceptions, it's still there.
Okay.
So I don't know.
You don't know what that no relates to?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. So I'll, I'll get that clarified as well.
Um, so can I move on?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, nineteen, remove sections addressing section three A, uh, incorporated in Serpent's initial revision. Uh, number twenty, exclude exploring the expansion of the existing forty R and action map to be incorporated. Um, so I did include on the map to, um, explore the general vicinity, just expanding that existing area. Um, twenty-one, include inclusionary zoning bylaw, incorporate in Serpent's initial revision. Twenty-two, remove lot size reductions from implement key zoning amendment strategy, to be incorporated. Um, twenty-three, include that Lakeville is part of Tonsome Consortium, it already was incorporated in Serpent's initial revision, include forty B slash forty R incorporated in Serpent's initial revision. And twenty-five, remove hire part-time staff member from strategy number five, incorporate in Serpent's initial revision. So those were all the items from her spreadsheet. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look through this version and make any comments, edits, suggestions. But I think, you know, personally, I think we really have to take a vote on this, whether, you know, with whatever revisions necessary, if anyone wants to add anything, but I think we do have to get this to DHCD and that way they can review it and if we have to make any. In that way, they can review it and if we have to make any changes at that point.
Well, the one that came out with the packet is the one that you revised, correct?
Yes, correct.
So I think that what Michelle has done here is generally reasonable, Mark. Has Taylor seen this?
Yes, well, the comments on this spreadsheet are from comments related to Michelle's version. So where they talk about things that they're going to incorporate, they're going to incorporate it into this version, but there are some.
So it looks like only item number six then is Z pass.
And I need a clarification on the other no on.
Eighteen.
Correct.
Eighteen, yeah. So, um, so what I was thinking as far as moving forward was to follow, call up Taylor and ask them to complete the edits that send it to the board. We will put it on our, I don't know if it'll be the next agenda um, in two weeks or the first one the following month. Or the end of, I mean, I guess the end of May. Have them come in, discuss any final changes. Um, explain to the board if we can't resolve it through phone calls and emails. And have the board vote at that meeting, after which time we'll have to go back to the select board with the revised version.
Well, it would be nice then if we could, even if we're not talking about it in two weeks, it would be nice if we could have a copy of it in two weeks.
Yeah.
For discussion, because it's counterproductive. We don't want to get it on the Wednesday before the meeting.
Right.
And then there's a big disagreement and we're now set back sixty days.
Okay.
And, and also, Mr. Chair, I don't know. So this number six that she's suggesting removing, is the planning board in agreement that it should be removed? Like, does anyone carry their way? I mean, is that amenable? It was, is basically benefits that I had, you know, found online from different media sources. I mean, if it's not necessary, I don't see why we really need to include that section anyways, though.
I mean, to me, I know, Michelle, you and I had talked at one point about you looked at past housing production plans and other things that, and you didn't want to put your name on it.
Right.
If you weren't entirely happy with it.
Right.
And, you know, you had mentioned a former member, a good guy, who, and you saw his name on some stuff and you were kind of, I, I think that at some point the machine is bigger than us and it's not the end of the world of, you know, three paragraphs aren't ideal. But, you know, I also understand if it doesn't need to be there, then it don't have to be.
Right.
Do either John or Nora, do you have any opinion on that? I know.
I'd like to take it out.
I mean.
I mean, the worst that can happen, Mark, is that Serpent comes back and says, no, it's got to stay in for whatever reasons they say.
She's the one saying to take it out, so.
Is that her comment?
Yeah, this number six, this little note, I'm assuming it's from her.
Right, the notes on the side, right?
Yeah.
But you asked to take it out.
Yeah, these were my original comments today.
The older section, she said no.
Yeah, she, she feels it needs to stay.
Oh, but actually, so you know what? And that's actually, I'm sorry, that's in regards to this housing choice initiative.
Right.
Yeah.
She needs.
But I, I was actually talking about this, this whole section that says planning for housing. She's saying to take it out, I'm sorry. Number four, I'm sorry, not number six. That's this whole section. Is it just, everybody's on board with just taking it out? This benefits planning for housing.
So now you're saying we'd be taking out talking about housing?
Yeah.
Number four. And Serpent wants us to leave in number six?
And yes, they're saying to leave in number six.
And they're saying it's a community plan for this affordable housing. Okay, I'm fine with that.
I'm.
We can take out four and leave six in.
Okay, leave six in?
Yeah. I think in talking to Taylor, or maybe it was at the Serpent meeting last night, there, somebody else was talking about the wording, that there were some very specific things that they knew that if the wording wasn't in there, it would not get approved.
Hmm.
And I believe this was one of the ones at another time, this question. They were told that if the wording wasn't in there, regardless of, of what you want, it wasn't going to get approved.
Hmm.
In this latest version that you have, I don't see anything. Just confirm for me. There's nothing about that acronym, biopic? So I won't approve one if that's in it. But other than that, we good?
Yeah, so should we, do we need to take a vote to send this to Taylor?
I'd like to see a clean copy before we make the revision.
I think that's the goal is.
For your next meeting.
We'd like to have a copy.
You'll have a clean copy.
Even if we don't discuss it, but we would like to leave with it to read it so that if we are, then two weeks from there, looking to vote on it, we would like to have it two weeks in advance. With all these comments that they said they're to be incorporated?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I just, we just need to get this done through DHCD, just in case there are revisions needed, because it expires this year.
So everybody's clear on, Mark, you, you got all your notes on what?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on. Any correspondence, Mark?
Uh, no, just, yeah.
Everything went well at, uh, Parks?
Yes, at Parks, they didn't make a decision, but, um, I was there discussing with them CPC application for bathroom, excuse me, and other improvements at John Fawn Park. So it's up to the Parks Commission to discuss that further and decide whether to submit something for funding.
I could be going down, down there right now.
Yes, they, they just tore down the old carousel building, I guess is originally what it was. And we're also, excuse me, uh, working on using ARPA funds to bring potable water to the site. There's a well there that was used for the bathrooms, but for non-drinking water, because it wasn't approved for drinking water. So, um, so that's separate from the Parks Commission possible application. That's something we're doing separately.
Uh, so just to give you an update, we met with Jamie from CNF about Stowe Estates.
Yep.
The board members had a couple of comments. He was going to look at, maybe change the angle of the hammerhead a little bit for the swing of the fire engine.
Okay.
He clarified a few things on the grade of the road.
Lights.
Uh, yeah, they're going to put driveway lights at the ends of each driveway uh, instead of waving, or in lieu of waving streetlights.
Streetlights, right.
They're going to come back and continue them. We didn't know, but we, we knew we didn't see the peer review yet.
Yeah, we should have that by the.
He asked, we were trying to figure out when we might see it. So, uh, when we get that back and send it along to him.
Yep.
Uh, and, and circulate it to the board members too, because I think, I'd like to see what the peer review has to say about that pitch of the road out near Myrick Street.
And there's water concerns from a butters.
Yeah, it was, I'm not sure if they were a couple, but they came together. Different last names, but they had some concerns about water on their property. So he's aware of that. And I asked to make sure that they filed with conservation just so we weren't signing a plan that would possibly be changed.
Right.
So we continued. Was it two weeks? He, he said put it, put it for two weeks and if he needed to continue.
He needed, right.
At least he was on the agenda for two weeks. And he was going to try and get on the concom agenda as soon as possible.
Oh, we did them for five-eleven.
Yeah, five-eleven. Thirteen Main was six to twenty-two.
Yeah, were you here for that? The tail end of Bow?
Yes, for the tail end of Bow, yes.
Yeah.
And also to let the, um, the board know that we met with the owners of Three Ten Kenneth Welch today, that they are in the process, that they've notified their tenants about parking across the street. They're in the process of identifying, they had a couple sites already identified and they're in the process of getting a shuttle van and a driver. So that is in the works uh, to remove the parking that occurs across the street. They will, as you know, they continued the Conservation Commission meeting to address.
Worked, yeah.
But they should, um, they indicated that they will have all the final comments to related to the peer review, um, you know, submitted shortly. So that then, once those are completed and approved, they get an order of conditions, they'll, uh, follow up with, um, our site plan review for parking lot, so.
Good.
And, and if I may just add, just from watching the conservation meeting, it looks like the town, and, and the notice as well that we saw from conservation, that the town is, because it's the town property, the town is actually in jeopardy of violation of the Wetlands Protection Act because of the allowance of this parking on town property, so.
Yeah, it's just gone on so long.
Be rectified.
It's gone on so long that it's destabilized, the, the, the grass structure is no longer there. So like in conservation, if we were going to close out an, uh, order of conditions, the final thing is the agent would go out and make sure the grass is growing, make sure all the soil is stabilized. So it's happened in reverse here. So that, that's the issue is we would never close out a project if it was in that condition. And so unfortunately, it's gone on that long. So hopefully, this is going to speed it up and then they, I think that if people have to park a quarter mile, half mile away, and, and they, they'll probably notice an on-time attendance issue from that. And maybe that gets them to expedite their.
Yeah.
Project.
No, they're, they're trying to do it in an organized manner. You know, and there's, there's other issues on site that, that we discussed that they are addressing as well, so.
And it's, we, we know, there's a lot of moving parts between multiple tenants and a different owner and management company, so. Hopefully it keeps going. Uh, just as an announcement, our next meeting is May eleventh, twenty-twenty-three at seven P.M. here at the Lakeville Police Station. Uh, I believe that we have no other business in front of the board tonight. So I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.